Good evening. This is a call to order for a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the Medina City School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. If you'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Chambers, if you'll call, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Hillberg.
Here.
Mr. Parkers.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Pavlik.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there, I'll ask the Board if there are any additions, removals, or modifications to the agenda?
I guess my only question is whether we should do anything official to indicate that the field trip to China is not going to occur that would have normally happened between this meeting and the next meeting. I think I've heard that because of the pandemic, it's not going to occur. But I guess if we know that it's not occurring and the district confirms that, then I'm satisfied.
The Chinese trip is not moving forward. We're currently working with the travel company to help those families get reimbursement from that trip. I know a number of the families did have insurance. I don't believe all of them had insurance on the trip, and we're looking at various options such as potential vouchers, very similar to what we're doing with the scheduled New York trip that the choir was supposed to take and was canceled.
But you don't feel it would help in that process to officially have the Board cancel the trip then at this point? You feel that you're good?
Yeah, I think we're in a good position and having a positive interaction with the travel company.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second. Mr. Chambers, roll.
Yes, Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Hillberg.
Aye.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Sable.
Thank you, and I'm going to move things around a little bit on the agenda because we do have some guests joining us this evening, so I want to be cognizant of their time with us. I think it is beneficial, however, for them to hear the first item, so I'm going to go ahead and start with that, with district savings. At the regular board meeting, I had discussed the reductions that we're going to be seeing from the state on our budget, the 1.5 million in the next two months, so the end of this current school year. We're told that it will definitely be a 1.5 heading into next year, so that's a $3 million reduction that we know for sure. The state has indicated that there are likely to be further reductions. I also mentioned at the last meeting that we're waiting on federal funds as part of the CARE Act, which we are hoping will offset some of those reductions. Those funds may be held specific for items or expenditures related to the COVID-19. Dave Chambers is continuing to keep a log of those expenditures, so we want to make sure that they're identified in the case that those funds are tagged specifically for that use. The other thing I mentioned at the last board meeting is that we were in the process of overviewing our budget and looking at upcoming expenditures. So we're not looking at reductions at this time, but what we're looking at is areas where we can draw savings. And the reason why we're currently taking that approach is because we are attempting to have minimal impact on the academics within the classroom as well as our current personnel in any means possible. So we're in the process of developing a spreadsheet which outlines various categories within the district. Those categories include facilities, staffing, instructional costs, technology costs, and we also had a category for kind of catch-all other items. This document is currently a working document, and I think it'll be a living document. I know it'll be a living document as we head over through the summer. And the reason why is because we won't know all of the cost-saving areas in the area of personnel until we start getting enrollment numbers through the summer, and that'll determine some of the areas where we will have to fill a position versus where it's one that we can not fill right now and put it off for a later time. I've said this over and over, but it's important that people understand that we're really pressing pause right now. So many of these expenditures are things that we do intend to come back to once the economy and the school funding returns to its normal level. I do anticipate that we're going to be prepared to share this spreadsheet with the community in the coming weeks. We want to have an open dialogue with our community in the steps that we're trying to take in order to cut some of those costs moving forward or to offset some of those costs in the hopes that we just need to weather a storm before the economy bounces back. So I'm not prepared to present that at this time, but I do want the community to know that that is going to be released probably within the next week to two weeks. We want to make sure that we have a well-thought-out document before we put that out there and share that information with the community. Any questions from the Board of Education regarding those cost-saving measures that we're taking in trying to implement as we head into the next school year? The next item I have is, actually, it's number five, I'm going to move it up to number two. I want to thank Carrie Shrek and Jeff Harrison for joining us this evening. One of the new state mandates is graduation seals, and thankfully, Carrie, who's an expert in this area, is here this evening to provide the Board with some more detailed information on the graduation seals. I do want to let the Board know that Carrie did already meet with our Curriculum Committee as well as Jeff and shared these same seals maybe a week or two weeks ago. So Carrie, thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to, Jeff, did you want to start?
No.
Okay. All right, so you guys all have this document in front of you, correct? It's been shared with you? No?
I don't.
Okay.
That was the document that you gave us during the last curriculum committee meeting, right, Carrie?
Correct.
Right.
So let me...
Carrie, I can look for it, and then I will present it, and you can maybe just start talking about it. Is that okay? I'll get it.
Wonderful. Okay. Okay, so there are, we're talking about the class of 2023, so it was, now that school has ended, it will be our coming into our sophomore year. So 2023 is what, this is the one that it affects. Our going-to-be seniors and our going-to-be juniors can use these as graduation requirements, but it is not required for them. So the first class that it's required for is what will be our sophomore class, the 2023. Along with other graduation requirements, along with credits and along with testing scores, the third item that they need for graduation is they need to complete two of 12 seals. So when we look at this document on the seals, nine of them are set by the state. They are ODE, long-term requirements, that we really don't have any say in what we can change or what we can offer. There it is. So the top 12 are in the box, and then the final three are the ones that were locally determined. So the community service seal, the fine and performing arts seal, and the student engagement seal. There is a definition for each of them. We did try to include specific information from Medina City Schools for the first nine. If it came up in a class, such as the readiness seal is going to be presented in our financial lit, in our AP Econ class, that seal will be presented there so that the students are aware of it. But many of the state-defined seals, the kids are going to earn by taking classes or earning certain scores on tests, earning an honors diploma, they're set in standard. It's the bottom three that the committee that met, which were various teachers, and Tina and Jeff and all of the school counselors were involved, the bottom three were the ones that we had to define, and we were able to write them with the input of the teachers. So the community service seal, we looked at how our students are engaging with community service, how we were going to document it. It is going to be 20 hours of community service. There was not a set hour. We heard some schools were going to do 10. We heard some schools were going to do 160. It was all over the board every time we talked with the people, when the state people would get together. So we settled on 20 for the community service and then documentation, which the school counselors will collect and keep. And then we gave them examples of things that will count, but we also gave them examples of things that will not count. So the things that will not count are going to be things such as during school hours, if they're volunteering in the tutoring center and it's during school hours, those are not going to count because they are in school and it's an NHS activity. If it's outside of school and they're tutoring, that would be something that could count. The fine and performing arts seal, the fine and performing arts seal is going to be tied to credits that the student earns at the high school. There's various classes that we went through with the art department and the performing arts department and determined if it's three credits that the student earns while they're in high school with the following courses or college credit plus courses, they can earn that seal. And then the last one is the student engagement seal. The student engagement seal comes into play with all of our extracurriculars, our clubs, our sports, our teams, and this is going to be three seasons or three extracurriculars or a combination. So you can see and let her see that that is laid out with the two-in-one or one-in-two or all three from one. So I think if you get a chance to read through those, we can answer, Jeff and I can answer any questions that you have, but again, the students, starting in the class of 2023, will have to complete two of the seals in order to graduate.
Carrie, I think you have done a great job with this. As I had been reading through it previous to today, it really makes those students get involved either in the community, giving back, reaching out and expanding their little circle, as well as with all of the clubs and activities that are at the high school, there really is something for everyone, and I think you did a fabulous job. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Something, if you don't mind, I'll cut in here a little bit. Something to remember here is when the teachers and staff members who helped come up with all of these, one thing we had to keep reminding ourselves was we couldn't use our top students as our frame of reference for this, because many of our, when I say top students, I mean our most actively involved students academically and extracurricular, because some people might look at the number of hours, like, well, that's not many. Well, we're talking about every student. We're talking about all walks of life, and for some students, volunteering that much could change their life and could be quite a bit of time. So, you know, it was a balance between trying to get all of our students involved, because they're going to have to obtain a number of these seals to be eligible for graduation. And again, this is yet another example of one of the multitude of things that our school counselors can be taxed with at times and helping keep track of with the students and families. It is quite the task, and I thank the school counselors for all their work with this project. Mr. Harrison and Mrs. Shrek, question for you. Will these be a physical seal that will go on the diploma?
So the state is mandating that at least two of the seals show on the diploma and two of the seals show on the transcript. So as we move through this, it has not been determined yet how many we're going to allow on the transcript and the diploma. At some point, we might run out of room on the diploma, so I think the state's going to come out with some guidelines on it, but the two of them do have to, there's stickers for the diploma, and then it's a download that goes on the transcript for the transcript seals.
We are well aware that many of our students will compete to try to get as many as possible, and we even had joked at one time, maybe they could put it on top of their cap for graduation.
There you go. Hey, that's a good competition to have there. We're short. Now, Carrie, these seals, as far as the class of 2021 and 2022, can they still earn them to go on their diploma? Are you going to use that as maybe a test drive or?
Yes, we will. So the seals right now, NeoNet, the computer service that we use, they do not have the seals ready to put on the transcripts. The only one that is available is the readiness seal currently, and that one came back, that one started two years ago, so that's the only one right now that we can put on the transcript, but I would think within the next year that they would be developing them, and we can add them to the transcripts even for those two classes that don't require it.
Okay. And speaking of transcripts, I know now that the school year is over, and there's probably going to be students requesting their transcripts. How do, could you just real quick tell the community or tell everybody how they go about requesting that?
Sure. For everybody, starting with, back to the class of 2012, we use a online system called parchment, and the students all have a parchment account starting in 10th or in ninth grade, and they can request a transcript through parchment. So current and active students, including this year's graduating class until August 1st, their sending of their transcripts is completely free, so they need to log into their account and order their transcript to themselves or the school. They should be released starting tomorrow. We finished them up this afternoon, and the secretaries will start releasing them electronically tomorrow. But then if you are a graduate or an alumni, class of 2012 or soon later, you do have to pay a small service fee for parchment. And prior to that, there's a transcript request form on the school website.
Thank you for that additional information.
Hey, Val.
Yes.
If I could chime in, we're not voting on this tonight, right? Is this something we have to vote on?
I do not believe so. Aaron, could you clarify that?
No, we're presenting this to the Board for your information. These are state requirements that we have to implement, so we want to make sure the Board's informed.
So can you email that document? It's, because it's, I can't read it, it's so small.
Yeah, we'll make sure every Board member gets a copy of the document.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you, Carrie and Jeff. You're welcome to stay with us. We understand if you're going to go catch some of the sun outside.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Take care, guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Good night. Next item up on the agenda is athletics and athletic facilities. The Board's aware, I sent out a communication to the community. Amy sent one out to the press the end of last week that we were reopening our outdoor facilities minus the baseball diamonds to the community for community use. The expectation is that when the community uses those outdoor facilities, that they follow appropriate social distancing and whatever regulations and orders are in place from the governor and the State Health Department. We have posted signs on all of our locations to remind the community as they use our grounds that they need to follow those procedures. I can say I'm excited to have these facilities opened back up for our community. I know I've spoken to and emailed with many community members that were anxious to get back on the track and working out or getting back on the tennis courts. In addition, we've also been able to open up some of our athletics, and that was a change in the initial order that was given by the governor and the State Health Department. So we are taking a phased approach in bringing athletics back and following the standards and guidelines as outlined by the Ohio Athletic Association. In addition to that, we have been collaborating directly with the Medina Health Department as well as surrounding districts and other school districts within our league. So area districts around us are going to be utilizing a similar procedure or approach in moving forward. Communication, more detailed communication is going out to our parents this evening after this meeting at 9:00. It's already queued up, and that outlines the details of the procedures that need to be followed. With the phased approach, it's going to start for our athletes with outdoor facilities. Obviously, with the outdoor facilities, it's a little bit easier to socially distance as well as making sure things are clean. We are limiting the amount of students that are going to be able to come in and train, and all training has to be no contact. So contacts, sports like basketball, that's why we haven't opened up the basketball courts, because in order for basketball to practice, they can't touch each other at all or share the same basketball. So there's going to be small groups, groups of 10 congregating. We may see more than 10 student athletes out on our field. That's because it's such a large area, and they're able to properly distance those groups of 10, but no group will be larger than 10, and in that 10 includes the coach that's working with that group of students. So when the students get together, there will always be the same small group of students with the same coach. So we're purposely trying to pod the students and coaches up so that they're around the same people each time. If somebody does have a temperature or various signs that we work at the Cleveland Clinic to identify as potential COVID side effects, they are asked or not allowed to, whether it's a coach or an athlete, to be a part of that practice until they've been cleared by a doctor. Our coaches are keeping daily logs of their athletes when they come in, so we can track their well-being. Another important piece, and I think the students really need to hear this one, they need to bring their own water bottles. I know they're accustomed oftentimes to sharing water bottles or a jug of Gatorade. That is not going to be permitted. We are concerned as we're heading into summer months and the temperatures are eventually, I'm assuming, going to go up and stay up. We've been on a roller coaster lately, but we are mandating that they bring their own bottle of water, and they won't be allowed in practice if they don't bring their own water. So we want to make sure they're able to stay hydrated while they're working out. In addition, as we head into Phase Two, we're going to see more facilities opening up, and that's when you'll see some of our indoor facilities opening up, such as our weight room. When things like the weight room open, there are going to be guidelines where people will only be entering from one door and leaving from one door. Restroom facilities and locker rooms will not be opened. There will be rules and regulations in regards, as you already mentioned, when basketball is able to come back, it'll be no contact. In terms of the weight room, things are going to have to be regularly washed down after students utilize the equipment, which they should be doing anyways, but also once we transition groups of students within the weight room. In addition, we've been provided some new guidelines in terms of weightlifting and spotting. If you've ever weightlifted before, for instance, with bench pressing, usually you have somebody spotting you, and they're standing right above you by your face, where that is no longer going to be permitted. We're still going to have spotters, but they're going to be at the ends of the weights, so they're further away from the person who's working out. During the workout sessions, student athletes are going to be required to wear masks except when they're doing an exercise. So if they're physically competing, they're able to take their mask off. If they're in the process of lifting weights, they can take their mask off. If they're shifting from bench press to dumbbells, they should put their mask on as they're transitioning from one activity to the next. So we're trying to be realistic. Obviously, it wouldn't be too easy, even though I've seen people out running with masks on. It wouldn't be very easy in terms of trying to get oxygen and things like that if they're wearing a mask. Our coaches will have masks on the entire time, so they will not be removing their As we head into Phase Three, we are going to be opening up more components of the athletic facilities. Phase Three is going to continue to follow the guidelines of the Ohio Athletic Association as well as the Health Department. I would anticipate that Phase Three will be the final step as we start heading back to some sort of normalcy. So the opening up of the athletics and the sports, it's very promising to me. I think it's a step in the right direction while still trying to keep our students safe. It's allowed us to outline some pretty specific procedures in order to bring our students back safely as well. So as we move forward and we're looking at how we bring students back in the fall and what school looks like in the fall, I think this is going to give us some good background in terms of how to handle things into the school year. At this time, I want to turn it over to Tina. We do have a committee, a leadership committee, that's been working in the district to start developing work for the fall. All this morning, we had a group, must have been 80 staff members, and that's administrators and teachers, that met all morning, in small group as well as large group, obviously virtually just like this, to start preparing for what the fall may look like. I'm sorry.
Aaron, I'm sorry. Before we turn it over to Tina, I do have some questions on the athletics and the facilities. So when, whenever you... Okay, okay. First up, regarding the... Okay, okay. First up, regarding the temperatures, I thought that, is it temperatures of 100? I thought that's what the CDC and the health department was saying.
Yeah, we actually had two different temperature readings. One was coming out of the health department and one was coming out of the Cleveland Clinic. The Cleveland Clinic's, and they both had good and reasonable rationale for why they were utilizing the various temperature. We worked with both to come to a common understanding and ended up with the 99. And the reason why is the Cleveland Clinic provides us with our athletic trainers, and the Cleveland Clinic did not feel comfortable having their trainers report if there were students or coaches present with the higher temperatures. So that's why we landed on the lower number.
Okay, I do want to, only because I experienced it firsthand, watching or witnessing somebody else, especially when these kids are coming in. Some of their cars don't have air conditioning. They're coming in, you know, they're excited, and their temperature could be, you know, 99.6. But then redo it, and it's after a minute or two when the excitement of, you know, everything that's been going on, their body's cold from sitting in a hot car, and their temperature has actually registered night normal, 98.6. Will the coaches be taking that into effect? Like if they gun them, or I'm sorry, if they take the temperature and it is, you know, 99.4 or whatever, say, hey, you know, why don't you just sit still for a minute or two and let's take that again? Is that...
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna use a common sense approach. I mean, if a student is riding their bike into practice and gets right off their bike and gets their temperature taken, definitely going through some other student athletes and then bringing them back in and doing another check. The other piece to the picture is if they're displaying any other types of cough. There's a whole list of items that can look up here on the sheet, but all kinds of things that are being looked for even outside of the temperature.
This is Chris. I was on the call with the health commission. We did get her permission to have the students sit for a few minutes and use a common sense approach. But Louie and Scott, our trainers, have been doing this for the Cleveland Clinic during this whole outbreak, so we feel comfortable with... They helped train the coaches, so we feel good, and I agree with Aaron. We'll use a common sense approach, so.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that because if that is just the one factor, and then all of a sudden the kid, again, because just because they rode their bike or whatever, but now they can't practice for two weeks or until they go see a doctor, you know, that definitely would be awkward. That was the easy question. Next one, restrooms, okay? Boys, piece of cake, no problem. What about the girls? It's already very awkward to be a teenage girl in sports at times and to not have access to a restroom. I have a lot of concern about that. Has that even been thought of?
Yep, and it's anticipated that in a later phase, we'll be resorting to opening the restrooms back up. In the early phases, the time that the students are going to be present is short. I want to say it's an hour limit per session. That's just off the top of my head. So we're trying to get the communication out to make sure that the students and the coaches have the opportunity to use facilities before they come in. The challenge is the standards that are in place by the health department in order to sanitize and keep those facilities appropriately sanitized. So we don't want to take the risk if we can avoid it. However, again, using a common sense approach, if a student has an emergency or something's going on, all they need to do is talk to their coach and we'll get them to a restroom.
Okay. Does that, I can foresee there being some, some issues with that?
Yeah, we actually set up a whole procedure for the coaches notifying us, us meaning Chris, Jim and I, if a restroom is utilized so we can make sure that we get our custodial crew over there and have it cleaned.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions from the board on athletics or facilities?
I have a quick question. Just regarding the OHSAA, I know in the past, there's been a limit to the number of contact days the coach can have. I thought I had heard that some of that has been lifted for some of the sports. Is that, do I have that correct?
Yeah, the OHSA, I don't know that they've lifted any of their requirements. I know they are making some adjustments due to the loss of the spring season and not knowing what's going to happen into the fall. But Todd and Mason have done a real good job. I think Todd sends emails every day from the OHSAA. But they've done a really nice job in keeping up with the regulations are, because we want to make sure that we don't misstep in practice when, when we're not supposed to. But an example is eligibility for next year. It was recently announced that all students are going to be eligible for the upcoming season because of the raining and schooling situation this past spring.
Yeah, Aaron, thank you for proceeding with, as you have carefully, you know, and with consultation with the clinic and the health department. Bring back sports training as safely as possible, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
So the fall instructional updates, just two things I want to mention before I turn it over to Tina. And I want to mention these because this has been a regular question I've been receiving from parents. And the first one is what's on our minds as a school district in terms of instruction in the fall? And people have heard me say, no matter what happens in the fall, it's not going to be a typical start to the school year. And that's not to say that we're not gonna have our students returning. We might. We don't know right now. What that means is that even if we do have all our students returning, we need to have protocol in place to make sure they're safe in the building as well as our staff and that proper procedures are, are being taken in terms of sanitation. We do have to consider some alternative models as well, and fully online as well as a blended, because we want to be prepared. If we're not permitted to open schools back up and the school closure order is still in place. Obviously, ideally, we're hoping that we could have our students back with our teachers. The other piece is our committee that I mentioned is working very hard to make some adjustments to whatever the schooling is going to look like, if it is online schooling. Now that we have the summer to prepare, we are listening to what was submitted in the survey in terms of increased contact with teachers, the issuing of grades. So those are all the kinds of things we're discussing and working on. I have had many parents that have been interested in being a part of this conversation, and I've already talked to Amy and Tina. And we are going to schedule probably as early as next week, a community chat or something of that nature where parents will be able to sign up. What I'm thinking is we'll have some sort of a signup form, and when they sign up, they'll receive the link to a virtual meeting like this where we can do some presentations for them as well as get their feedback for the fall. I did, just on Friday, send out the survey to gauge parents' comfort level with students returning to school. So we're hoping to be able to share that information first with that committee and obviously the board sometime next week. We have already received, last time I looked, just over 1,700 responses, so that was just over the weekend. So that's a lot of responses in a short amount of time compared to when we typically send out a survey. The other piece that I've gotten several questions on is, are we going to have a date when we're just gonna make a decision and let everybody know? And I'm sure I get that question because parents want to be able to prepare for whatever they have to do, if they're gonna have children home full-time, part-time, or not at all. And we are going to be working on a drop dead date. We have not decided what that date is yet. I anticipate it'll be late July, early August at the absolute latest. And just like our parents and families need an opportunity to prepare for what's coming, our staff, our teachers really need some time and have asked for some time to make sure they're, they're prepared as well. So there is going to be a point where we're just gonna have to decide what's best for Medina City Schools and start moving full force forward with that plan. And the only thing that would change that plan once we move forward is if the orders change and everybody's going back to school. We're not gonna go online if that's the decision, July 20th, if the governor opens schools back up August 15th. Then we're gonna prepare to have our kids back. So hopefully I didn't take too much of your fun, Tina. I'm gonna turn it over to you now.
Okay, so like Aaron said, we've been working on getting some plans together. Right now, we have three options. We are hoping, like Aaron said, that we can all be back face to face. We want our students back, and we want to be back with them in the classroom. We may be all online, depending on where things are, or we may have a blend of both. It might be a hybrid. So that would be some online, some face to face, and that could look a bunch of different ways. You know, there's a, there's a lot of different ways, and we're still working out what the best ways would be for our district. So what we've done so far is we are, we've put together a planning committee, and this planning committee are some teacher experts in our district. Teachers who have, have a lot of knowledge in technology, teachers who have knowledge and experience in online learning, or teachers who have knowledge and experience in a blended model, meaning some online and some face to face. And what we've been doing is we've been going through all of our three scenarios, face to face, all online, or a blend, and just deciding what is best practice for students. What should instruction look like that is best practice for students in all three of those scenarios? And then we've been talking about how can we be supportive of teachers in all three scenarios? Because whatever, whatever scenario we choose, we want to make sure that it's best for students and that we're supporting teachers so they can be successful in that scenario. So we have that planning committee, and they have, they have worked and they've given us a lot of great feedback today. Like Aaron said, we took that feedback to our, our district leadership team, which is comprised of all of our administrators and our teacher leaders, our CDCs. And they got a chance to hear about all three scenarios, and they got a chance to give some feedback on that. Our teacher planning committee is going to meet again on Wednesday morning, or I'm sorry, Wednesday afternoon, and we're gonna review the feedback and finish up looking at, at some of the three plans. We're also gonna be working with administrators throughout the summer, and as Aaron said, we'll have a parent committee looking at it. We'll take it to our board curriculum committee. We are just looking for feedback. One of the things that we've also really relied heavily on as we're, as we're trying to frame our three models is, are the surveys that, that have gone out. So we, as Aaron said, we've had a survey that parents and students took. We had over 1,000 people respond to that survey. So that was great, and it was great information for us. We're making sure that, that what we heard from that survey is being incorporated into our plan. We also sent out a teacher survey on what they thought and how they felt the online learning went. And we had really great response. Out of 400 teachers, we had over 350 respond to that, so we have also been taking that into consideration. And so once we choose a plan, whatever drop dead date we have, we will get that committee back together and then really flesh it out exactly what will it look like? So right now, that's our plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Tina, the most recent survey that went out, I'd like just to remind parents, they still have time to fill that out, correct? The deadline is tomorrow. Prepare us to complete that?
Yes, and actually Amy sent out that survey, but it is still open.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, we're actually gonna send out a reminder tomorrow morning to parents so we get as much feedback as possible.
Okay, we had a great response on that one, too. I know we had over 1,000 people respond to that one, too.
Okay, and Tina, just in case, because I had brought it to Amy and Aaron's attention, is the email going to both or all email, parent email, guardian, that's on that child's record? My husband got it, I did not. So I'm curious if, is it just going to primary? Now, Amy had confirmed that, the system did show that it got delivered to my inbox, my personal box, but it never appeared. So if a parent has not received that invitation, can they contact Amy or yourself for that, or is there, is it posted on the website?
No, we, we don't have it posted on the website because we're trying to limit who completes the survey. We want to make sure it's actually our parents providing the feedback. In terms of who the email went out to, it's anybody who normally receives emails, a parent who normally receives emails from the district. So as a parent, if you get the snow day alerts that I send out through email or any other newsletter through email, you should have received the survey. If a parent hasn't received the survey and wants to complete it, all they need to do is shoot us an email and we'll send them the link.
Okay, thank you. I just know that sometimes those technology gremlins get into the system, and poof, where did it go? So thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to clarify, in terms of choosing our drop dead date, the reason why I haven't done that yet is because we're still working with state organizations as well as the Ohio Department of Education. So we don't want to pre, prematurely set a drop dead date that we're gonna have to push back. So we're waiting to hear what the timeline is from the state end first. Any questions? The next item that I wanted to discuss with the board and have some public conversation about is the root classroom project. And I know we typically have more presentations than discussions on these types of items, but considering the situation that we're in as a district and we're looking for ways where we could put a hold on some projects in order to save and offset some of that one and a half to $3 million loss that we're facing, I thought it was important that we have some conversation so that there is an understanding to the community if we do move forward with this project. Of course, the board has the option to vote no on this item that's later in the agenda or to have it removed. But I wanted to explain why I'm recommending to move forward with it. And it is approximately a $230,000 project. Even though that could be a good chunk of change for us to save, I think it's prudent for us to move forward with the root classroom project. And the reason why is because this is a project we will have to do eventually. We do need more classrooms and routes, no matter what our redistricting picture looks like. The other piece to that equation is teaming, and we are dedicated to moving towards teaming. And those classrooms will need to be in place for us to move towards that sooner than later. The, the other piece is redistricting. You know, we went from a position where we were starting to whittle down some of the various directions we could go with redistricting, and that whole pile has been thrown in the air. So adding those classrooms to routes, knowing we could be looking at very different structures for redistricting, provides the district a lot more flexibility to handle the enrollment of our students with those additional classrooms. What those additional classrooms are is it's converting the other two locker bays into classrooms. classrooms, similar to what we did a year or two ago. It's my understanding the building was purposely constructed to be able to add those classrooms if needed in a fairly inexpensive manner. Obviously, $230,000 is a lot cheaper than a potential multi-million dollar extension to add the same amount of classrooms. So I think that was good foresight when the building was put together. The other piece, and we did seriously consider putting this project on pause, is that we've been told by our architects that we have gotten a very good price for this bid. I think the bid was originally approximately $280,000, $290,000. Dave's showing three fingers, 300,000. So it came in around 230, so you can see that's quite a cost savings from what was projected. The reason why we were able to get such a good deal is because contractors want to get to work. With everybody being shut down with this COVID-19, people are anxious to get back to work. And supplies are available right now because the construction wasn't happening as much over the past three or four months. There is concern that as the economy turns back around and things go back to normal, that there's going to be a shortage of construction supplies because they haven't been producing the supplies at the same level, because they haven't been able to have the employees in to do that. So if we do wait, say till next summer, to do this very same project, it could be quite a bit more than what it is now. So by moving forward with this project, it saves us money in the long run. And in addition, it provides us some flexibility with whatever redistricting is going to look like, because we know we need to do some redistricting. Because that picture's changed with the current climate. Any questions or conversation about the classroom projects?
Erin, I have one question. When I was looking at the drawings, is it three classrooms that are being added?
Yeah, I believe it's three classrooms. I think one bay is going to two classrooms and the other bay is going to one classroom. And the reason why we decided to do that is the old bay that we did, we turned into two classrooms and they're two smaller classrooms. But what we did do is we put a sliding wall in so that we could open it up if we needed to. And it just provides us with more room to be able to get the one classroom bigger rather than put in the sliding wall.
Okay, thank you. And I hear you about the prices. I mean, it's, I know it's, you know, weighing the pros and the cons, but when you look at the amount of money, the long-term savings to the district, I do believe it is the right move to do it now. Welcome thoughts from the other board members?
No, I agree that it makes sense. Just a technical question. I see we've got the drawings presented in the content, but unfortunately it's in the administrative content, so nobody from the public can see that. And I think when we talked about the other day, I thought that was going to be in there for the public to see it. But that's under item three, the Root drawings. So I don't know.
Yeah, Rob, yeah. The bid itself is in public content, but I, I agree that these drawings should be in administrative content because of the detail to it and what it shows. So I'm okay with, the board was able to look at them, so.
Okay. Well, I just, I know at the Career Center, when we have meetings, you know, we don't have administrative content. And I always struggle with that because I think that there's, it's necessary sometimes to have the information available so people can see why we're spending the money. But, but I hear you. If there's a security issue, I don't want to mess that up.
Right. And to me, there would be a security issue because of the detail that's involved in these drawings. So that's, again, why I feel comfortable where they're at. Any other comments from the board members?
I agree with that, Mrs. Pavlik. Thank you.
I do as well.
All right. Brad?
I do as well.
Okay. All right.
And the last item, I just want to make a few comments about the close of the school year. Very strange close to the year. I think we made the best of it that we can. Our virtual graduation, in my opinion, was very successful and very personal for our students and families, while we were able to keep that social distancing and follow those orders. In addition, the honoring of our students receiving awards and the signs going out to students' yards, celebrating what they've done over the course of the school year or their transitioning from one grade to another, to cleaning out the buildings during the final week or two of the school year. Now, things weren't perfect. I'll be the first one to admit that. And we've learned quite a bit over the last three months, both positive and negative. And those are lessons that I've really tried to stress to our entire staff to utilize to make us better. That the experiences we've had over the last three months, even when we have everybody back to full capacity, is going to make us a better school district than we were before with the new resources, the new techniques, the new abilities. So the important thing is that we don't forget about this and just step back into our normal groove. It's important that we keep these in the light and we continue to become better because of the situation that we've been in. And I've been extremely impressed with our staff in working with them, our administrative team. You know, to be surrounded by people that have such a passion for kids. And yes, we had tough conversations, but it was with the right end in mind. And then to be a part of these committee meetings, like imagine being on a committee meeting like what we're doing now for three hours. And I mean, that's what our teachers and our administrators did this morning. And just the conversation was so rich. And our staff had so much to say and so much feedback to give. I'm despite what we're going through or what we might face in the fall, I'm excited with the boost that I think this is going to give us as a school district, not only with academics and moving forward, but also with working together, being a Medina family, and doing what we're all here for. That's providing academics for our students. So I want to thank everybody for their help throughout the course of the year, especially these last three months. I sent out an end of year email to parents on Friday. And we've given out a super, I always say it wrong, but superhero B award throughout the year. We had staff members present it to each other for just superhero feats that they did throughout the year. And I presented the final one to our parents for all the work that they've done the last three months to help us as a school district to continue with their children's academics. So we got a lot of work to do this summer in preparing for next year. And if there's no other questions for me, we can move on to the action items, if that's okay, Mrs. Pavlik?
Yes.
We do have three resolutions, a proposal on the agenda. These are for summer project work. Typically, these would be on a regular board meeting agenda. However, with what we've gone through with the adjustments to our facilities planning, to just essential projects, these got a little bit delayed. Therefore, I'm presenting them to the board here in June so we can, now that we're into the summer, we can get these projects rolling so they're completed for the beginning of the school year. And the first one, it is recommended that the Board of Education award the bid for the asphalt repairs project to Ohio Paving and Construction in the amount of $258,000, $239,053. And I did want to note, thank you Dr. Qualick, she did add a note to the public content to make things a little bit clearer in terms of that bid, because I know it was confusing with, all that was wrapped up in there.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you, too. Sorry, I was contacting you about that. So yes, that definitely clarifies quite a bit. I'd like to make the motion to approve this action item. Any discussion?
Mrs. Pavlik, I just have one question.
Sure.
One question. It's from OHM. In these three action items, it seems like one's from OHM that's reviewing it, and then they're recommending to us, and then another one's from Fanning and Howie. Why is it different? Don't we have a consistent way of getting these reviewed and then presenting to the board?
We do, but we want to make sure that our organizations that we're working with that are most knowledgeable of the projects are the ones that are making the recommendations to us. So OHM, just in general, assists us in reviewing projects and making sure that we're getting the best prices. When we're looking at something that involves construction and the drawing of architectural drawings, we want our architects rather than the general contract reviewer reviewing that work. So that's why, we want to make sure we have experts looking at areas of their specialty.
And Erin's right, Ron. OHM covers asphalt and concrete, so that's why they do that. And then the other ones are architects. So they look at buildings and building.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that makes sense.
Amy, is there any public comments on this action item?
There is no public comment or questions.
Okay. All right. Hearing no changes, Mr. Chambers, if you'll call roll.
Ms. Parkus?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Hilberg?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the second item is the bid for the Root Classrooms. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the bid for the AI Root Middle School Classroom Conversion Project to Summit Construction Company in the amount of $230,832,000.
I would like to make a motion to accept the, to award the bid, the Root Classrooms to Summit Construction Company?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the board members?
Just a comment again. Again, this makes sense from the standpoint that we pay to lease trailers at Claggett and eventually we want to be out of the trailer leasing business. And this is one of the necessary steps, I think, to do that at some point. The other question I guess I have for the administration, and I don't know if it's for Chris or Erin, but in the letter from Fanning Howie, it says the school district will also be purchasing directly through a separate vendor, the necessary project door slaps, hardware and frames, which are to be turned over and installed by Summit Construction as part of the project requirements. Do we have an idea of how much additional cost that will be?
We don't have an exact cost and it'll depend on what we purchase. But we'll get that to the board before we purchase it.
But I assume when Fanning, you know, looked at all the bids, that they took that into account when recommending this one, I would assume.
Correct. And we'll still have to purchase the lockers and the desks and those kinds of things. But some of it we can wait and we'll talk with the board about that, depending on which classrooms.
So Chris, with, because in the letter it specifically calls out Summit Construction as part of the project requirements, those other bid amounts, did they also exclude those door slaps, hardware and frames?
Yes, they have the same bid. Dave's shaking his head, too. Dave was part of the bidding. So the bid specs are the same for every vendor.
Okay. And I'll tell you what, there are definitely a big gap between the lowest bid and the highest bid. Makes you, what is it, over $130,000. That's a huge difference. So I'm glad we found Summit Construction to do this project for us. Any other comments or discussion from the board? Amy, is there any public comment coming in?
Nothing from the public.
Hearing no changes, Mr. Chambers, if you'll call roll.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Hilberg?
Aye.
Ms. Parkus?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the last item that I'm recommending this evening, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposal from Anclik Construction, is that right, Chris? Solutions for the Blake Elementary School Security Wall Project in the amount of just over $28,000. I do have a few comments on this. This comes through recommendations of our safety committee, who regularly reviews our district to make sure we're providing the safest environments possible. This project essentially is going to create a people trap over at Blake for when people enter the building. You can see how that's for security reasons. And yes, we do have two other buildings that do not completely have a people trap yet. One of those is Canavin, and we are making that adjustment as well, or a Canavin. But they already have a little area before you enter the building, so it's at a much lower cost that doesn't need this level of approval or this amount of work. The other one is Claggett. Claggett is a project that we looked at. That is a very big project because there's no easy way to put a people trap in that building without doing some major renovations. And with not yet determining the direction that we're going in terms of facilities, we thought it made sense to hold off on that Claggett project right now.
The other piece before you vote, and Dave will shake his head for this one, too. This one came $20,000 under what we had budgeted as well. So that's.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Anclik Construction Solutions for the man trap for Blake Elementary.
I'll second for Angle Key.
Angle, is that how you say it?
It's Angle Key, they're out of the run.
Okay. All right. Any additional discussion or changes by the board?
I would like to thank the administration, the board, with some of these projects, especially considering it's a safety issue. And I think, I know we've been looking at ways to have some savings, but this is something that is important. And if we can get a cost savings on it, even better.
Yep. Whether we go back to this fall, part time, full time, eventually it will be back full time and it will definitely be needed. Amy, any public comments coming in?
No public comment.
All right. Hearing no changes, Mr. Chambers?
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Mr. Hilberg?
Aye.
Ms. Parkus?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
We've reached the public participation of the meeting. Community members wishing to address the board are asked to abide by the following guidelines. Attendees shall register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon arrival at the meeting. After those that have registered have spoken, if time allows, the board president will ask for public participation from all other attendees. Please state your name, address, and affiliation. Please keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. And all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually.
Mrs. Pavlik, real quick, if I could jump in before, if, if Amy has any public, we've been talking at some point of getting back together in person, I think, as a board, and we've been talking to Mr. Sable about that and trying to do it safely and so forth, but I don't know if, since it's a work session, if it would be a topic for us to discuss at some point. I know we didn't put on the agenda tonight, but, but I would be in favor of us, especially when we do executive content material, it's a little more difficult in this environment online, but, but I, I think it's been a great medium and so forth. And, and I, I know we're permitted to use this for quite a period of time, I think, through the end of the year, but I guess the question is, at what point we, we look, you know, to use, whether we use the PAC or whether we use the middle auditorium or, or the, the boardroom with just a, no more than 10 people at a time. I, I think it's something we ought to be looking at here, and I know Aaron's working on it, but I just wanted to bring it up as a topic. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Rob, because I know I'm anxious to get back to the in-person meetings. While this has been a great tool to use in the interim, I think that oftentimes, when you're face-to-face in a room, just like students and teachers, there's so much more that is gained in person-to-person contact, contact, contact versus virtual. So I hear you, I'm anxious to get back in, you know, all together with you. I'd be interested in hearing thoughts of the other board members as well.
I would, you want to hear it right now? Do you want to hear thoughts? Just, just one comment. The Rec Center's next advisory board meeting is, I think it's June 18th on a Thursday. And I talked to Mike Wright today, and he said it's in-person, so, at the Rec Center. So if that's any indication of things slowly going back to normal, there's, there's an example.
I'm all for getting back together.
I, I agree that it is not the same, meaning this way versus in-person, though it is easier to read facial expressions this way than meeting in person with a mask on. I think it's important that we, when it's, when it's time, we feel it's time to do that, that we make sure we have all the safety precautions in place. And I don't want to incur any additional costs to the district for us doing that in terms of perhaps additional cleaning that would need to be done, sanitizing areas that now aren't maybe on the way to be sanitized because we're all in there, how are the microphones going to be sanitized, as well as restrooms? I know Mr. Sable said there's current, there's, the health department has protocols in place for the restrooms that need to be sanitized, so are we not going to be able to use restrooms? Our meetings usually last longer than an hour, so, you know, and that can require additional costs. So I just want to make sure that we weigh all of that. Yes, I'm anxious for us to get back, I want to make sure that we don't end up costing the district money because of these things that need to be in place and approved by the health department to make sure that we have proper sanitation, safety measures in place.
I, I hear you, Becky, definitely, and, and those are very good points. I do know, you know, being, part of being in leadership is, is, you know, leading, leading the charge, and I guess I look at it as it would definitely be a good practice run, what have you, that's probably not the right word I want to use, but to iron out a lot of these little intricacies, as far as, okay, if they, how fast can we get that custodian over to that bathroom if somebody needed to use it? So there's definitely good points on both sides, so.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure the board knows that we are having that conversation administratively, and we don't have a definite plan in place yet, but I'm guessing it'll be some sort of a phased approach, potentially just getting the board back to make sure we're staying within the limits and decreasing the amount of sanitation that has to occur within a room with still broadcasting virtually, so we could have public interaction and then stepping forward from there. But I do think as we head through the summer, especially as our students are hopefully coming back, it'd be nice to get back to our regular board meetings.
Absolutely, and if the students are coming back, we need to be back, for sure, so I feel strongly on that one. I would never ask anybody to do anything that I'm not willing to do myself, I guess has always been my mindset, so. All right. At this time, we're going to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, and compensation of a public employee or official in preparation for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure might reveal information that could jeopardize the district's security. And I would like to add that there will be no action taken when we return, and that Mrs. Qualick and Mr. Shields will be joining us in executive session.
I'll second that.
I did want to make sure real quick, because we did public participation, but then we started talking about work sessions. Was there any questions, Mrs. Busby, from the public?
There's one.
Okay.
Board member Tom Cahalan says, hello? It's good to see us all.
Tom Cahalan, don't you have anything better to do down in Florida than watch us? What a funny guy.
Hi, Tom.
Other than that, there's nothing else.
Okay. At this time, we do need to join on a different link for executive session.
We got to take, take a vote then, yeah.
Okay, yep. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you.
See you on the other side.